Maybe Larry Longkey knows, but did anybody think about having the Tiffany Room open that day? We've done that in the past, but I don't know if it's on anybody's agenda. I expect that somebody would be able to give the tours if you think people will be around, but I.
I was just putting the tree lighting on my calendar. I didn't realize.
All right, well, if anybody wants to follow up on that, that's great. If not.
The next announcement is we usually do this at the end of the meeting, but since we're on Zoom, and I'm afraid people possibly log off, both of them, before the end of the meeting. I thought this would be a good time to celebrate the last 12 years in Connie's case, or six years in Janice's case, of service to the Board of Trustees. Had a lot of Connie and I, I've actually never been on a board without Connie, so it's going to be very odd for me. I think we've only missed a handful of meetings over all those 12 years, Connie. So it's definitely going to be bittersweet. You've been my deputy mayor for the last six years, at least four. I was trying to figure it out, but it's been a long time. And you know, you've been on the board, your commitment to public service in general, but especially historic causes has been unbelievable. I used to think you just like to dress up, but I think that's part of it. But you know, it's always makes things more festive when Connie comes in appropriate attire. But her dedication and always bringing us back to the historical context of issues and celebrating our history has always been something I really admired with Connie. Janice and her kind of vast experience on the school board, as well as her legal background, has been invaluable to the board for, you know, many different things. You know, last couple of years, you've definitely been someone that I've spoken with kind of offline a lot to bounce ideas about and things like that. And you're both really going to be missed on the board, but I don't think both of you are going to, you know, shuffle off to Florida anytime soon. So I hope you'll stay active and let us know how, what your next chapter looks like. If you want to do something in the village, you're of course always welcome on any board you'd like to serve on. So I will open it up to my colleagues to also celebrate Janice and Connie at this time. It looks like Larry, it looks like you're unmuted already.
Sure. You know, again, I would just want to thank both of them. You know, I'm the junior member and you know, I can no longer say I'm still learning, but I learned a lot from the two of you. And I think the main thing I learned was really to listen with respect, to disagree when, when, you know, issues could not be, you know, met with consensus, but to have a level of respect for everyone's opinion. I never felt lectured to. I never felt talked down to. I felt my opinions were always welcomed and again welcomed with respect. And I'll be grateful for everything I've learned over the last six years for myself now, I guess, just about. Thank you both.
Yeah, I wanted to second what's being said and also just wish you guys both best of luck in your newfound freedom. You have more free time than you used to. But hopefully, like Brian says, you'll consider continuing to be involved in village activities. I know that Connie will be involved in a larger historical context, and we'll have to see what Janice gets into. But thank you again for working with us and working through a lot of interesting and sometimes very unique and difficult issues and proposals that we've had to deal with over the years.
And before I turn it over to Janice and Connie, well, if Mary Ann or Brenda or Larry want to say anything, but I guess before we get to you guys, maybe we'll just promote Joe Archino, the one to say a few things.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I saw your hand up, Joe.
Okay, thank you. Well, yeah, I'm actually here just to thank Janice and Connie. Having been around as long as I've had, I've served for many, many boards, a whole bunch of mayors and even more trustees. And I just don't think the public really understands how hard it is to do what you have to do as an elected official. You know, the hours that you put in, the difficult times dealing with people like me and other department heads, it's not easy. The public, you know, usually only sees what they see when they turn on the Zoom and have no idea of how much effort all of you put in. I want you both to know I'm very grateful, you know, whether we agreed or disagreed. I always respected both of you and appreciate that you were always there to listen. So good luck. Hope to see you both around town. On behalf of my entire staff and the Wreckin' Parks Advisory Committee, the Irvington Woods Committee and the Community Advisory Board, we thank you both for all you've done for us. So best of luck.
Great. So Mary Ann, do you have your?
Yeah, yeah. I thought I'd add to Janice first. I want to say for your whole time on the board, you've been so thoughtful and intelligent. You always got the point and you stayed on point. And you have the ability to explain your thinking very clearly. The village has been lucky to have you for these last 12 years, six years on the Board of Education and then six years on the Board of Trustees. I wish you many happy years with your family and especially as a grandma. Connie, I've served with you your entire 12 years on the Board of Trustees. I think I served a little longer than you, but not much. I've always admired your passion, your dedication to the village and to your many interests. Most importantly, local history and history in general, the Town Hall Theater, tourism development in the business district. You fight hard for what you believe in and for what you thinks best for the village. Yet you always keep your cool and you're perennially cheerful. I'm going to miss working with you and hopefully we'll find ways to keep up a friendship.
I just wanted to thank you both, you know, for the time that we got to work together. We've had numerous meetings in my office to cover topics of interest and lots of backs and forths about things. And I think you brought a, both of you brought a very good perspective, a different perspective in some cases and in some cases in line with everyone else. And it was a very healthy conversation every time we had it. So thank you so much for serving and you can stop in anytime you'd like.
I hope, yeah, I hope to see the two of you in town. There's, I always wanted, you know, repeat, I don't want to repeat anything that's been not said, but it's all very true. You've been a pleasure to work with and your insightfulness and your love for the town was, is always evident. Hope you'll feel welcome to stop in anytime and wish you both every health and happiness to you and your families.
Well, I'll just say thank you back to all of you for all your really kind and thoughtful words. It's, if Brian, you need me to help hold your hand one day, I promise I will come in and hold your hand. Really, I know, it's the, you know, it's the residents, the voters in Irvington. It's, it's public service. I've been really, I've been honored, honored to serve. And it's a responsibility and an honor, and I thank everybody out there in Zoom land. So really, thank you. And we will have a short meeting, I know.
I just want to start by, most of you have heard this, but the best definition I've ever come across is this. Local government is what we owe each other. What we owe each other, each of us to everyone, everyone to each individual, no matter our particular circumstances. So as this is the end of my tenure in local government, I know I owe all of you a debt of gratitude. And I want to say thank you. First to Mayor Brian Smith, who has the gift of relating to pretty much everybody and building consensus on a variety of issues affecting the village. And I wholeheartedly congratulate you, Brian, on your reelection as mayor, as a Democrat. Special thanks to Connie, who's ably served the village for 12 years, several of them as deputy mayor. Connie recruited me for this board and has been my model of engagement and hard work that goes with it. And I know she'll continue to serve this community. Connie and I, along with Brian and our continuing trustees Larry and Mark, have been quite a team. Our differences have been more emphasis than substance. And I deeply appreciate Larry and Mark's ongoing work on behalf of the village. And what a village. From the bottom of my heart, I want to say thank you to all our staff who do the work every day to make it work. Thanks to our Parks and Rec Department, all of us Ben from DPW Groups, Programs, and our many spectacular parts. EPW, who live up to their motto, keeping Irvington clean and green, even in blizzards and hurricanes. The Water Department, because really we would all be up the creek without them. Building Department and our excellent responsive, community-focused Police Department, Fire Department and Village Court. We're all enriched by our cultural jewels, the library and the Irvington Town Hall Theater. My next thank you is to our volunteers. A few of us get elected, many get hired, but a lot of those who make this village run give their time and expertise on behalf of all of us with little fanfare. These village boards and committees deal with a broad range of issues from environment to new construction to ethics. There are also many groups beyond the village's organizational chart that benefit us all, including the Board of Ed, PTSA, the Historical Society and the Volunteer Ambulance Corps. If local government is what we owe each other in this village, we've made it clear that we expect a lot from each other and are committed to giving a lot. If I simply listed all the groups that serve the village, this meeting would go into overtime. We have a short agenda. My thank to them all. And you village people who I've worked with most closely deserve my heartfelt thanks. Brenda, Mary Ann, and our truly peerless village administrator Larry Schaffer, who always finds ways to solve problems, obtain funding and smooth ruffled feathers. I think my congratulations to our incoming trustees Mitchell Bard and Arlene Burgos. You are joining a great team and I truly hope that you will find satisfaction in your new roles in local government. Several of you have offered me kind words over the past weeks, have said you'll miss me. Well, I'm not moving. On the village, thank you all.
Thank you, Janice. Thank you, Connie.
Thank you both very much and enjoy your last meeting. As we have no correspondence, so I don't get to speed read one last time with you present, but.
Sure. Can I add in one more announcement? I didn't want to interrupt the departure conversation, but this is something to look forward to as well. There's a new exhibit at the Historical Society. And it's a Barbara Denyer. In honor of her, it has some of her art and some of her fashion and a lot of photographs showing views of installed work inside her house. It's definitely an interesting way to get to know someone who was, had a large impact favorably most times on the village. And hopefully we'll get a chance to go and have some fun looking at her stuff.
Great. Thank you, Mark. So as I was saying, no correspondence tonight, so we will open it up for public comment. So to raise your hands. And while you're figuring that out or thinking about it, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Anyone have any questions on that? Otherwise, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda. If I can have a second? All in favor? Now, the, the next topic was going to be a continuation of a public hearing requesting a special permit for adaptive reuse of historic building at 67 North Broadway, known as Bill of the World, but the applicants requested an adjournment. So we will adjourn that to the next meeting, which is December 6th. So that brings us to our next topic, which is recognition of Juneteenth as a local village holiday. Larry, you know, I kind of look at this almost as a two-pronged item. One is kind of in my mind, having the board kind of formally, you know, approve it as a holiday kind of on a conceptual basis. And then there's kind of the operational piece that we had to discuss and figure out the, the impacts, you know, both financially and with contracts and things like that. And, you know, I think that the board decided that it's such, it's an important enough, it's such an important holiday that it's almost the operational stuff we'll figure out. You know, it's the positive thing is that it's not that big an operational issue. But, you know, I think we all felt that, you know, we've said all along and Connie had drafted a proclamation last February, you know, with us kind of, you know, with the board saying that this is an important holiday for us to celebrate. So I think it's only natural or makes the most sense that we're going to formally recognize it as a, as a holiday here in the village of Irvington. I don't know if there's anything else anybody wants to say about it, but that was kind of my take. Connie, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned their resolution last year. I, I, I remember writing it and I remember discussing it. And I remember doing some of the research ahead of time to check some of the historic facts to make sure they were right from several sources. But when I reread it today, what I really would like to read is one of the whereas is that we, it's the second, it's the one right before the be it resolved. And it reads, "The Village of Irvington Board of Trustees Holds a Strong Belief in the Value of Equity and Inclusion and Fair Treatment for All Those Who Live, Work or Visit the Village. Therefore, Be It Resolved." So it's, it's, it's the same message we sent several years ago when we created a resolution about being a welcoming community. So I think it's a strong belief. It's an appropriate belief. All the other holidays aren't diminished when one is added. July 4th is still July 4th, Christmas holidays or Christmas holidays. And all, all those are equally important. And I would just say, there's a great historian, Annette Gordon Reed. She's a very well-established African-American historian. And she actually wrote a book last year and was on a lot of talk shows. And it's called On Juneteenth. She's from Texas. And I would just recommend that anybody who wants to Google that, watch one of her interviews. I think you'd be really gratified to see how much it meant through her life. And she, she can answer any question about the appropriate history and why it's important. So I, I'm certainly going to vote in favor of this acceptance as an official Irvington village holiday.
Great. If anybody else has anything want to say, but otherwise I will go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas Juneteenth National Independence Day, June 19th, is recognized as an official public holiday for both the state of New York and the federal government. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby recognizes Juneteenth National Independence Day, June 19th, as an official public holiday in the village of Irvington. I'll make a motion if I can have a second. All in favor? And I think it's a, the only last thing I'll say is that although it is obviously now both a federal and state holiday, our calendar doesn't always necessarily reflect those, those holidays. So that's why we're actually making this action. It's not just purely symbolic. It's actually, it's actually a necessary action to actually celebrate it in the village of Irvington. So there's no garbage pickup. There's, you know, the police get paid for a holiday. There's, there's a bunch of things that kick into place once we do this. So it's not just purely ceremonial. It's, it's practical as well. And speaking of practical, authorization to approve change order number one for the road milling and paving contract?
Yeah, this is a, well, it's a fairly large change order, but if you recall, Cyrus Field Road was, was repaved. And there was a number of unknown conditions in the asphalt that had to be corrected while they were out there. So resulted in some overages, but the total amount that we spent in the repaving is still within our, within our paving budget. So there, there was some, it's, it's a pretty rugged road, as you know. So that's not unusual, but that's what this change order is about.
Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, resolve to approve change order number one in the amount of $24,073.85 and to authorize the village administrator execute said change order. I'll make the motion if I can have a second. All in favor? Next up is authorization to submit a grant application for the River Road Water Main Replacement Project. I think we've been here before, Larry.
Yes, we had submitted an application for this very project. It relates to the water main under River Road, which has had a number of breaks and problems that have affected both the senior center, as well as the Bridge Street complex in that area of the village. The application was denied two years ago. There was no round of funding last year and they reopened it this year. So we're trying again, once more. If this doesn't work, we'll regroup during our capital budget process and decide how to proceed with this project or not. That's, we'll have that discussion down the road. But I would also say that the, the resolution that was attached to the agenda, it was updated. There was a few blanks, which maybe some of you picked up on that. Yeah. As far as the numbers, the dollars, and we were waiting for some final cost estimates from our engineer to have the correct numbers in there. So Mary, do you have the revised resolution there? Do you want me to?
If you want to give me the, the project costs and the match percentage?
Yeah. So the, it's, the, in the, in the second to last paragraph, the, the numbers are going to be 353,500 is the grant amount that's being requested. The total project cost, 589,300. And the match is the difference, 235,800.
So for the third paragraph down, it's the same total project cost and the match is equal to what?
You know, the percentage. Forty percent is, it's, that's all that's necessary at that point. So 589,300 or 40%.
Okay. If there aren't any questions, I'll go ahead. Whereas the village of Irvington is applying to the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation for a Water Infrastructure Improvement Act Grant, the River Road Water Main Replacement Project. And whereas the grant application requires the applicant municipality's Board of Trustees to authorize the undertaking of the project, expenditures for the project and the obligation of the funds necessary for the local match. And whereas the total project cost is projected at $589,300 and the bills were provided match equal to 40% of the project cost. Whereas the project is a type two action, number one pursuant to the New York State Environmental Security Quality Review Act, that's requiring no further environmental review. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby does approve and endorse the application for $353,500 grant under the 2001 Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, Drinking Water Program for the River Road Water Main Replacement Project, which has a total project cost of $589,300, does authorize undertaking of the project and upon approval of the grant request, commits $235,800 in local mashing funds to the project from existing surplus funds. And for the result, the village administrator is hereby authorized to sign the funding agreement with the Environmental Facilities Corporation and the associated documents. I'll make a motion if I can have a second. Janice was a second. Okay. All in favor? Hi. Good luck, Larry.
Yeah, well, we'll see.
Next item is acceptance of the Justice Court Report for 2020, 2021. Larry and I discussed this before the meeting. It seems like it's a, you know, the simple, this seems like it's a smaller report than in the past because there's less activity last year, I guess. But it doesn't seem to be anything really a note to discuss tonight other than formally accepting the document. If anyone else has any questions or?
Brenda, is this, what's the requirement for this? Why the board has to approve?
Because I have to file it with the resolution with the unified court system. So it's an administrative procedure that the state requires that is adopted by the board, but that's the cash receipt. So it's a reconciliation of their cash at the end of the year and for the activities that flowed through the court. The court, you know, remits their monthly collections to the village. And then the, then the state basically deems which part is payable to the state. So at the end of, you know, 531, that's the cash that was left for the reconciliation of the cash. So there was nothing unusual, went very smoothly. And it's just a resolution that we need so I can file it with the state.
Any other questions? Or we have a short resolution. Resolve to accept the annual justice court report issued by PKF O'Connor Davies LLP for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year. I'll make a motion if I can have a second. All in favor? Now for the controversial one, talk about the birds and bees at a public meeting. This is actually approval of a coalition letter on the Birds and Bees Protection Act. I got the request from both the mayor of Hastings and our own Chet Kerr, if we would sign on to this letter. And it seemed like a good thing to me. I think it kind of speaks for itself what it's asking for, basically protecting the birds, bees and water and people from toxin. But other than the title, I don't think there's any controversy here. If there's any questions or comments? Otherwise, resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the Coalition Letter on the Birds and Bees Protection Act, A7429.S6998. I'll make the motion if I can have a second. All in favor? Hi. It was kind of nice, your last.
I'm sorry. I thought what was, was really interesting was the percentage. And we, I mean, we've heard this before, but the percentage of the heights that have been lost is just, you know, amazing. And the, the economic impact that has on businesses in, in New York State and well, elsewhere of course. But yeah, so it's a pretty serious thing and I'm glad we're signing on.
Absolutely. And I thank both the mayor of Hastings and, and Chet for bringing to our attention. And your last official vote was to approve the birds and the bees.
There you go. Be more family oriented.
So next up are trustee liaison reports. Should we start? Should we go the opposite way? We'll start with Connie tonight?
Okay. All right. Here's my quick report. I have no report. Sorry.
Perfect. Then we'll go with Janice next.
I do. I have reports. The Fire Department really appreciates community support at the recent untimely death of Nick Gaspari Senior, who is the ex-chief, a training officer and fire inspector. For the schools, the district is appreciative of the villages' support, particularly that of the Police Department in making the rescheduled homecoming parade and game possible on Friday, November 5th, a great night for the entire community. The board will welcome a presentation from the Historical Society's Commemorate Committee at its next meeting, Tuesday, November 23rd. We'll focus on the proposed monument to honor enslaved Americans that may be erected on the grounds of the Main Street School. Comments and questions are welcome. And the district continues to make great progress in its capital project. Phase one projects are completed with the exception of the punch list items. And the bidding process for phase two will begin in the coming weeks. For the library, adult programs coming up. Medicare 101 on Saturday, 11/20 at 2:00 PM. Art Deco with Tony McKean, Saturday, December 11th at 2:00 PM. And there is an origami leaf garland project on November 28th at 5:30 PM, combining origami with autumn leaves to create a sensational seasonal sensation for your Thanksgiving heart. You have the option of attending in person or taking a grab and go kit home and doing it on your own. Adults are welcome, not just young adults. Okay. That is it for me.
Thank you. And we'll go back to Mark.
Not too much. I really just said what I was said about the Barbara Denier show. And the other committees are all sort of, and boards are all sort of doing their normal things. Nothing interesting or out of the ordinary to report, I should say. Interesting always.
And Larry?
First, I'd like to thank Connie and Janice for seconding every resolution.
We got every bit of work out of them tonight.
So this Sunday is the Peter Ole Turkey Trot. Register online now. Over 100 runners are already registered. There'll be a very limited onsite registration only between 12 and 1:00 PM at the Dow's Lane School. The race starts at 2:00 PM sharp. Please be aware that there will be traffic delays on Broadway and on Main Street during that time between 2:00 o'clock and 3:00 o'clock. Contact Maureen DePauley with any questions. Contact Maureen DePauli with any questions. As we get ready to hunker down for for the late fall into winter, the bathrooms in all parks will remain open, weather permitting. And we're no longer accepting park reservations for Memorial, Sina Hudson and Matheson Parks. Irvington Woods Committee never hunkers down. They've set up opportunities for volunteers to help rid the woods of invasive vines and bushes. The program is called an invasive removal cleanup in the Irvington Woods Park. There'll be two workdays in December, the 4th and the 18th of December. We would like you to register online to be eligible and you can register for as many dates as you're interested. You can contact CJ Riley with any questions. The Wood Committee, the Woods Committee is also scheduled to meet this Thursday, November 18th. Two separate subcommittees of the Woods continue to work on both the redesign of the Irvington Woods map and a study of the current deer issues facing the woods. Thanksgiving Day Delivery Program, we're still looking for some volunteers to make deliveries on Thanksgiving Day and are still accepting donations. Contact Laura Copman or Joe. We expect to deliver over 150 meals on Thanksgiving morning to between 75 and 100 locations. As we've said before, we have sponsorships both of benches and trees in Matheson Park. You can contact Laura Copman for that. A bench is between $2,000 and $2,500 for a sponsorship with a brass plaque and trees are $1,700. This year's holiday tree lighting, as Brian said earlier, has been scheduled for Saturday, December 11th. It's beginning at four with the tree lighting at five. And Connie, I'll look into the Tiffany room.
Thank you.
That's it.
Great. Village Administrator's Report.
Just a quick word that I'll be meeting with your two new colleagues later this week, Mitchell Bard and Arlene Burgos. And we'll try to get any questions they might have answered and they can hit the ground running on December 6th. Looking forward to it.
Great. Oh, I had one one note for you, Larry. I actually cannot make the VOC on Thursday. I'll shoot an email to the group, but I have a, I forgot I have a charity thing I have to get it, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll be there.
Village Clerk Treasurers Report.
We have a bond sale coming up. We do it annually for the most part and the term sheets went out today. We'll get the bids back by November 23rd. We expect with the rates remaining low, that they'll be very advantageous. The bond sale is for about 4.6 million.
Great. Village Attorney's Report. Public comment. I didn't have any action items other than for Janice and Connie to take the new path they're taking to help the village. So I will just thank you both once again for all your help and, you know, while you won't have to come to every Monday and Wednesday meeting anymore, please share your thoughts because they'll always be valued here. And I don't know if Connie, maybe you'd like to make a motion to adjourn tonight. We'll let Janice second it.
I don't know if I can handle the extreme power in my hand that I shall yield. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Excellent. Well, thank you all. Have a great night and we'll see you all soon.
Do we want to vote on that?
All in favor?
It's, it was, it it was by decree on my.
You're all in favor?
Yeah.
All right.
Everybody have a good Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Bye bye.
Bye bye, all.